Good evening, welcome to the June 3rd Pitt County Commissioners Meeting. We're happy to have you with us tonight. I will call our meeting to order, let's please have roll call. And if you would, stand with me and Commissioner Perkins-Williams will provide our invocation.
Please bow. Dear Lord, we thank you for another day. We thank you for those who are here this evening. Bless Pitt County. Bless the residents and everyone everywhere. Bless the leaders of this community. Give us a heart like Thine. Teach us love, grace, and mercy. All these things I pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you, please. Stay standing, please. I'll invite Avery Tittle up to the microphone to do our pledge. Introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Avery Tittle and I'm a senior at Aiden Griffin High School and I'm also the student body president there. Thank you for having me this evening and at this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Avery.
Thank you and have a good evening.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. I've got a motion and a second, please vote. Thank you. Madam Manager, do we have any public addresses?
We have one signed up to speak, Pam Strickland. If the attorney would read the statement.
Pitt County welcomes all matters, sorry, Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Hi, I'm Pam Strickland. My personal address is 4128 Dill Drive in Farmville. But our office for North Carolina Stop Human Trafficking is 1413 Evans Street here in Greenville. Thank you Commissioners for allowing me to come today. So I am Pam Strickland. I'm the founder and chief executive officer of North Carolina Stop Human Trafficking. I have here with me one of our board members, Ferris Dixon, Pitt County District Attorney, and two of our team members, Vanessa Bearman, who is our training specialist, and Alaria, who's an intern with us this semester. And I've got the list of our full board on the back of the handout that I handed you. Commissioners, every year you have declared January to be Human Trafficking Awareness Month and offer supportive words to our nonprofit, which we are extremely grateful for. But we provide a number of necessary services here in Pitt County for free, and that's hard. Your top three priorities are education, public safety, and human services, and our nonprofit impacts all three of those priority areas. As you can see from the handout, last year we conducted twenty training sessions here in Pitt County and trained almost three hundred professionals. Through the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking, which we founded and we facilitate, we provide education and training monthly at our meetings. That group also provided a human trafficking simulation to our local law enforcement last year in partnership with the Pitt Community College Law Enforcement Training Center. The multidisciplinary team that we created and facilitate provides services to human trafficking victims. We help them when they're just coming out of the trafficking situation until the time when they are able to be independent. So just yesterday, I attended graduate day at a local church. I was the only family member that this survivor had in the country, so he invited me to the family luncheon at the church after the service, and he said, "Pam, I would not have graduated from college if I hadn't met you." The funds that prevented his being evicted from his apartment came from the ECE Health Foundation and were administered by our nonprofit. Pitt County is blessed to have a number of nonprofits working on a number of really important issues, but I submit to you that human trafficking is not an issue. It's a reality of our life here in Pitt County. We have children and adults who are being victimized here in our community. Do you remember last year, there were two siblings who had been trafficked and they were found? Five members of our Pitt County Human Trafficking Multidisciplinary Team provided services to those two kids. We want to keep doing the work that we're called to do, but we need your help. Thirty thousand dollars won't fund all the work that we do here in Pitt County, but it will certainly help, and we're asking for your help.
Thank you, Ms. Strickland. Mr. Dixon, good to see you again, sir.
Good to see you all.
Thank you for attending. Okay, next up is our public hearings. Jonas, you have both of them, stormwater ordinance and program document repeal and adoption.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I come before you with a consideration to repeal our existing stormwater ordinance and re-adopt it under a new ordinance. Pitt County was mandated by the state back in 2004 to adopt stormwater regulations. Those rules at the time only applied in the Tar-Pamlico River Basin. However, the board voted to administer the stormwater ordinance in both the Noose and Tar-Pamlico River Basins. Since then, the state has adopted new rules that apply both in the Noose and Tar-Pamlico River Basins. So Pitt County was tipped in for both river basins. And just to familiarize you a little bit with Pitt County's river basins, you have the Tar-Pamlico River Basin located in the northern part of the county and the Noose shown in blue here in the southern portion of Pitt County. The revisions virtually provide identical structures for both basins in the new ordinance. Planning staff has revised the ordinance to reflect only the required items by the state, with the exception of keeping the peak flow rate match in our ordinance, which is currently in the existing ordinance. We chose to continue to hold on to that in the new proposed ordinance. To give you a little bit of history of this, it's been a long work in progress. We started after 2020 with the state adopting the new rules. We held stakeholder meetings from March of '21 to January of '22. We submitted the draft ordinance to the Division of Water Resources, which then took that ordinance before the Environmental Management Committee for their review and approval, which took place on November the 9th of '23. Since then, we have taken this before our planning board meeting on May 15th, and we're here tonight before you guys. So let's go over some of the major changes. In the Noose Basin, the previous loading requirements for nitrogen was four pounds per acre per year of nitrogen, and the new rules dropped that down to 3.6. In the Tar-Pamlico Basin, the previous rules required four pounds of nitrogen per acre per year and .4 for phosphorus. Those new rules have changed the phosphorus loading and increased that loading to .8 pounds per acre per year. The state has also developed a new calculating method for calculating these nutrient loading requirements. That's known as a SNAP tool. And also, a big change is the developers will now be required to provide on-site treatment if the built-upon area exceeds 24 percent. So in the past, built-upon area didn't come into play. Now, if it exceeds, if a site exceeds 24 percent, they have to install a stormwater control measure. Also, they can dedicate off-site regional stormwater control measures that may be used for treatment covering multiple unrelated projects. So developers can come together, install a larger stormwater facility to treat multiple properties, which wasn't allowed previously. Just to give you some idea of what these measures look like, you'll see a stormwater wetland on your right-hand side and then a dried attention pond on your left-hand side, and these are taken here in Pitt County. So, as I mentioned, we are proposing to continue to keep the peak flow rate match. That is not a water quality measure, that is more of a water quantity measure. So we want to make sure that these developments, as they're implemented, that they're taking care of their stormwater runoff and not causing flash flooding to adjacent properties. Also, the nutrient buy-down is still in play. If the nutrient reduction needs are not met with that initial primary facility, then they have the option to buy down through the state. The planning board has reviewed this proposed ordinance and voted unanimously on May 15th to repeal and adopt the new ordinance. So, staff also recommends repealing the existing stormwater control ordinance and adopting the new rules. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have or open the public hearing.
I've got a question.
Okay.
What do you mean by buy-down?
So, the buy-down option is what we refer to it as, and a developer, if he exceeds the nutrient requirements, he can make a payment to a private mitigation bank, and if there are no private mitigation banks that hold credits, he can apply to the state to buy down nutrient loading credits. And then the state or the private mitigation banks come into the hydrological unit code and implement stormwater control measures to reduce those nutrients.
Seems like a very complicated system.
It is.
It could be simplified. Don't allow buy-downs.
It could be simplified.
Simplified. Don't allow buy-downs.
Right.
Don't have that as a provision.
Right.
We deal with the same thing on the CMSD board and dumping into the Noose and got to buy nitrogen credits and everything else. It's very complicated and very difficult.
Is a motion in order?
We'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor? I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask you, how close do you work with the city of Greenville on these stormwater issues?
Very closely. Matter of fact, the stakeholder group meetings that I mentioned, we partnered with the city to meet with the development community and address any concerns that they had.
Yeah, because I'm hearing a lot of concerns, you know, within the city of Greenville.
Absolutely, and we're fortunate out in the county. We're more rural in nature, so we don't have the amount of built-upon area that they encounter in the city. So our rules are a little easier to enforce out in the county.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anybody like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. It was a pleasure to board.
I'm going to get my approval first.
Do we have a motion to approve here, second?
Second.
Okay. Motion on second, please vote. Jonas, we'll move on to the next one.
All right, keeping in line with stormwater ordinance amendments, this happens to be within our zoning ordinance for the county, but does involve a stormwater to some extent. In 1989, the state of North Carolina adopted the Stormwater Watershed Protection Act, which establishes protections for the state's surface water drinking supplies. Local governments were required to implement the protection programs for the water supply watersheds located within their jurisdictions, and the water supply watersheds are classified on a scale from a water supply one to a water supply five. Pitt County happens to fall within the water supply four watershed. The watershed has two areas located in it. There's a critical area and the protected area. Again, just to orient you a little bit, in Pitt County, we're looking at the northwest portion of the county between Bethel and Fountain, which includes Falkland in the hatched area. That is our water supply watershed area. If you'll notice on your screen, the small red hatched area down towards Greenville, that is the critical area located in Pitt County. That is in the city of Greenville's jurisdiction, so we do not have any critical area, and that is the point at which the water supply is taken in by Greenville Utilities. So that is the whole purpose of protecting this water supply watershed, is ensuring we have safe drinking water. The water supply watershed is administered through our zoning ordinance in Section 7 as an overlay district. Recently, the general statutes and North Carolina Administrative Code that govern these watersheds were updated, and the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has revised their model ordinance. So our ordinance is being amended to reflect those changes. Some major changes, it removes the water, the critical area supplemental standards, as well as the protected area supplemental standards, and incorporates all of that language into a new table. It revises the low-density and high-density development options and adds procedures for issuance of the water supply protection permit. It also adds a table to, that details the maximum allowable densities and the minimum lot sizes. It adds procedures for the issuance of high-density watershed protection permits and also changes the process for the issuance of that high-density watershed protection permit, changing it from before the technical review committee to the Board of Adjustment. Back when we adopted these languages, we did not have a Board of Adjustment. Now we do, and it's a more appropriate board for it to go before. It also removes provisions for the stormwater controlled structures, and the reason for that is those are found in the North Carolina Administrative Code, so instead of including it in our ordinance, we can refer to that administrative code in case it's updated. It also adds options for density averaging. If, in certain circumstances, if an applicant wants to develop one property more densely, we can allow that, and then he will make up for it on another property with less density. It also revises the buffering requirements to comply with the state regulations and revises the minor and major variance standards, again, going before the Board of Adjustment, and then if it's appealed before the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission. It also adds the table for watershed areas as far as the non-permitted and permitted uses that you'll see there. It revises the major and minor variance procedures for consistency with the model ordinance and replace the procedures for high-density watershed protection permits. Planning staff finds that the proposed amendments to the Pitt County zoning ordinance are consistent with the envisioned Pitt County 2045 Conference of Land Use Plan. Because of the recommendation NE-4 of the plan recommends updating the water supply watersheds regulations as required by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Staff also finds that it's, the proposed amendments are reasonable in the public's best interest because they are intended for consistency with the state laws and regulations for the protection of the water supply watershed, which provides the drinking water to our residents. Again, the planning board has reviewed this text amendment and, at its May 15th, 2024 meeting, and voted unanimously for approval. So staff is recommending approval of this request with an effective date of July 1st.
Any Commissioner questions?
Yeah, I got it. So, does the, let's say we approve it, likely we will. Does the state then review the language that's in this, and then they bless it?
The state has already reviewed our revisions and blessed it already. So we've already gone through that process with the state, we're just asking for your blessing.
Any other Commissioner questions? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing and what I'd like to speak in favor or against. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. It was a pleasure to board.
Most to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, please vote. Okay, Madam Manager, next up is the manager's report.
Yes, just a few dates to remind you of. Your next meeting date, June 4th at 6:00 PM. Tomorrow night is your public hearing on the budget in this room. Your second meeting in June will be on the 17th at 6:00 PM in this room. A reminder that June 19th, our offices are closed in observance of June 10th, and on July 22nd, you'll just have one meeting for the month of July at 6:00 PM in this room. For those who are signed up to attend, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' County Advocacy Days will be June 11th and 12th in Raleigh. And then I have one item to add for you today, and that relates to the Pitt County Farmer's Market, and it's a good news item. You've got a graphic on your screen to let you know that the market has been performing exceptionally well since we opened this season. There's been a great uptick in customers. We're averaging about 630 on a Saturday. This past weekend, we had 873 people visit the market, which is the most we've seen, haven't even seen that since reopening day. We've been working closely with each of the vendors, and we are now looking to begin June 11th with a Tuesday afternoon-evening market from 3:00 to 7:00 PM. On Tuesdays, which is peak growing season, from June 11th until August 20th. And wanted to make you aware of that, and we will push out campaigns through multiple media platforms to make the public aware of this additional day, and we are pleased with how it's going. I have an email that was shared with me from one of the vendors who said, "This is shaping up to be the best market season for me yet." We just overtook his profits in 2023 this week. So, we are pleased with how that's going, appreciative of the leadership of Jonas Hill, PJ Andrews, and Hannah Smith in Soil and Water, and look forward to a Tuesday market, so come on out if you are available. That's all that I have.
Great news. Thank you, Madam Manager.
It's good that we hear some positive things about that.
I hear a motion for item sent. A motion in a second. Okay, please vote. And we'll move to the items for decision. Madam Manager, you have the first one.
Yes, you have coming up the NACO National Association of Counties Conference in July, and the NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference in August. Both of them will have business meetings with voting sessions, and you need to designate a voting delegate for each of those events. Those attending are listed on page 106 in your agenda, so your choices for the NACO Annual Conference would be Chairman Smith, Vice Chair Nunley, Commissioners Perkins-Williams, Floyd Huggins, McLawhorn, and Holloman. And then for the NCACC, you have Commissioners Floyd Huggins, McLawhorn, and Perkins-Williams to choose from.
It was a pleasure to board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Ann Huggins if she'd like to accept that.
Okay, we have a nomination. Any others?
Which one?
The NACO.
Okay. Any others?
You did a good job at that.
All right.
You do that.
Well, you want to do them all with both?
Yeah, we can do them all together.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Mayor McLawhorn for the NCACC.
Okay, any others?
She's making all nominations. Nobody can nominate her, right?
We need a motion and a second, but I'll just vote.
You do.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second then, if you would, please vote.
This is for both, right?
Sorry. Okay, thank you. Tim, you've got the next one, contracts for lawn care.
Hey, good evening, board. Glad to be in front of you this evening. This item is for our current lawn care service contract. Currently, we have two different vendors that provide that service for us. WAC does all of our main campuses, and Little's Nursery does our solid waste convenience sites, as well as the transfer station. One of those folks came to us and asked us if we were going to extend their contract, which ends the end of this year. They were going to buy some additional equipment, and this is a pretty large contract, and so they asked if we would look into the possibility of getting permission, even though the contract doesn't end at the end of this year, does end at the end of this year, to get a verbal okay from the board to extend it one additional year. At which time during that year, so as the contract ends in December of this year, between December of this year and December of next year, we will also be looking into the possibilities of cost savings of performing some of that work in-house. So as that year goes on, we will actually look into that as well, and then make a decision on how to move forward at the end of '25 with our lawn care service. So tonight, we're just asking that you bless us. A service contract does not have to be bid out. We have in the past, I think it was three years ago when we bid it out, and so we're very pleased with both groups that have performed the service, and so just ask you tonight to bless the manager approving, signing a one-year extension once that time comes.
I have a question.
Okay.
I like the cutting, but they only cut the front part of the ditch. In some places, they do the back part, and that's when it gets, and when those trees grow up, they get wet and they have a tendency to lean and fall into traffic way. It would be much better if the backdrop of the ditch, as well as the front ditch, are cut, because it's a safety feature.
Where is this at? Which, where are you? As soon as you're speaking, yes.
Well, I was in Stokes today, and they only cut part of the backdrop and all of the front drop.
Is that at the convenience site? Is that the convenience site, or is it?
No, I'm talking about the cutting.
Okay, well, this is for the county-owned facilities. It's not, that's probably DOT that cuts those ditches. This is just for our county and facility properties.
You said lawn care, okay. I'm sorry.
Sorry, any other questions? It was a pleasure to board.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, please vote. Thank you, Tim. Madam Manager, I think you have the next three.
Yes, for your Animal Services Advisory Board, there's, it is being recommended that you nominate and appoint Chris Young and Emily Perez-Maldonado to that, to serve on that advisory board.
Motion to approve.
Move second.
We have a motion and a second. Sorry, guys.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
There's, on your next one, you're being requested to make an appointment to the Greenville Board of Adjustment, and it is recommended that you appoint Clayton Self to the regular seat on the Greenville Board of Adjustment.
Motion to approve. A motion in a second, please vote.
And your last appointment this evening is for the Pitt County Farm and Food Council. It's being recommended that you appoint Jonas Hill to fill the seat for the planning department on the Pitt County Farm and Food Council.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second, please vote. Okay. I think that's it, is it, Madam Manager?
That's all that I have.
Rowing right along. Yes, we'll start with the left, I'm sorry. Commissioner Floyd Huggins.
I'm going to ask, are we still excusing absent Commissioners?
You may, I'll defer to the attorney.
Sure, so Commissioner, you can excuse if you would like to document excuse versus unexcused, but it doesn't have any effect on voting. So the only reason you would excuse a Commissioner is if they're present and there's some sort of conflict, then you would excuse them so they're not counted in the affirmative. So at the start of the meeting, you do not need to, you can, but there's no statutory requirement for you to excuse them.
I know we've been doing it, so I didn't want to not do it for Commissioner Nunley.
Okay. I'm okay. I mean, I don't see any reason, can we still do that?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Okay, move to excuse.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to excuse Commissioner Nunley. Okay, I'll start with Commissioner Coulson with our comments.
None.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
I don't have any either.
Commissioner, why are you both quiet tonight?
I actually do. I know I spoke with Janice a week or so ago. I've had several complaints from landowners about people riding ATVs and four-wheelers on their property. Some people are running over crops and stuff. Some people are running over crops and stuff and messing stuff up, and this is from, not just from Southern Pitt County, but from all over. I talked to a gentleman last week, and I think he was kind of upset because nothing has seemed to be done or been enforced. So I know Janice and I talked about a few options, but I would like to ask her and maybe Mr. Gibson to reach out to the sheriff's office, see what ordinances we do have in place, educate people on that, and then possibly, depending on what the ordinances are, maybe we could look into some stricter ordinances, because when you've got $200,000 worth of crops out there planted and people drive four-wheelers all on your property, that's going to keep you from being able to pay your bills, so.
Be glad to bring that back to your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner McLawhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the opportunity to visit the farmers' market, and there were some very positive concerns about it, and well, positive things that they said that would like it, but I think you mentioned that it's now going to be open on, what was it, Thursday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. So I think that's a, that's a positive thing. I don't know whether you, Janice, or not have had the opportunity to talk to any of the members there, but at one time, there seemed to be some concerns. I'm not going to say all negative, but there was some concerns. And when I was there about two weeks ago, and it seems like now, listening to you saying that it's going to be open a little bit more often, how has, has those concerns been, have they been addressed to a degree that you have been satisfied with?
I believe so. So there is a Farmers Market Advisory Board, and I attended the last meeting of that advisory board with other members of staff, and we, there was a lot of listening and a lot of suggestions and a lot of action from the board that evening. They directed a survey to determine which second day would be most desired by the majority of the vendors. PJ Andrews did that survey. The result of that survey is what resulted in this recommendation to have the additional day. There, there are still some folks who are complaining about different aspects at the farmers' market, and we are working diligently to continue to address those concerns. Anytime there's change, that can be difficult for folks, but we're also hearing from many, as many vendors that may have concerns. There are other vendors that don't. So the end of this one particular email, the one that I read that said, "This is shaping up to be the best market season for me yet. We just overtook 2023 this week," and this vendor was transparent and showing his earnings year over year in how they've increased this year with the market. And he goes on to say, "For all of the folks complaining, these numbers just don't reflect the reality that the complainers-in-chief are trying to portray." And so there are folks who are dissatisfied, and we are working to address those concerns, and there are folks who are very satisfied, and we're working to learn from their experience and help others. It's, and there are many vendors in the market. Some of the concerns from some vendors, for example, are that other vendors don't show up on a particular Saturday, and that isn't something that we can totally control if a person is paying for their space, and they've reserved that space and they have a conflict and don't bring things that Saturday. We're focusing on the things that we do have control over. We have absolutely amped up the marketing efforts, the website, the social media, the radio advertising. We have tremendously improved the appearance within the market, and we have uniform tables so that everybody stays in their same, same space. One of the complaints is that some vendors would prefer to have a different table. They want to bring in their own table versus using the table that's provided. But when folks had individual tables, for example, sometimes they would fall over on another vendor's spot, or they might block another vendor. And so there's been mixed reviews on the uniformity of the tables, for example, but it does not appear for the majority of our vendors to be impacting their success at the market. And I think the second day is something that a lot of the folks wanted to see. I think we'll have that during peak growing season, and it will be positive. But as you hear, or as anyone hears, particular complaints that I can do something about, let me know, and I will do something about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Excuse me. I like to offer consolances and prayers to the members of my district who mourn the death of Mrs. Oliver Musker Gray. This tragedy has impacted the community, and I just wanted to say to you, let's be respectful and embrace their needs as far as condolences and supporting them in their loss. That is all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward.
I really don't have any comments, except the farmers' market is, that is one of our biggest assets, I think, and I don't know how many of you all go, but we generally, you know, go when it's open, and I'm glad to see that we're getting a plan so that people will realize when it's open and know when it's open and know what to expect when they get there, so thank y'all for that.
Commissioner Ward?
May I ask a question?
Sure, we'll go back to you.
Thank you so very much. I'm sorry, I didn't say it when I was talking, but the human trafficking, people wanted $30,000.
I was going to bring that up.
And I would like very much to offer that motion.
Okay. Is that for $30,000? Is that correct?
Yes, that's what she would like to see, and just looking at the effect, and I've seen my district has been involved in something of that nature when I first became, but $30,000 is a good thing for safety.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
A motion and a second to provide $30,000.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there, Mr. Kroom, I mean, is there money that we can move that's not going to affect other departments? Okay.
Okay, please vote.
Oh, I couldn't find it. Get in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, members.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Holloman to comment?
I can.
Okay. All hearts and minds at peace.
I'd like to offer a motion to adjourn.
Okay. A motion to adjourn and a second. See everybody tomorrow night.
I'm not really giving me the lead. I think Ann didn't get it done yet.